Good evening, everyone. Hi. So, thank you. If you're planning to provide public comments tonight, or you're doing a presentation, please make sure that you adjust the mic first to your mic.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 Milbury City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Holliburton?
Present.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All the members of the City Council are present.
Thank you so very much. For those who are able, would you please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance? Please be seated. Tonight, we begin our meeting with ceremonial presentations, and we have five proclamation this evening. And we will start with proclaiming September 2025, September 21st, 2025, as Malta Independence Days. And we have our beloved Honorable Council of Malta, Louis Vella, joining us this evening. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vella. We have a little proclamation here.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Whereas, as we commemorate the 61st Independence Day of Malta, we continue to reaffirm the strong and friendly ties that connect the city of Milbury with the great people of Malta, and we salute the rich heritage of Maltese Americans. And whereas, by celebrating Malta's Independence Day, we renew our commitment to enhancing professional, educational, and cultural exchange opportunities between the city of Milbury and Malta. Whereas, following a long tradition of kindness and collaboration, the city of Milbury offers its good wishes for a joyous celebration to the people of Malta on September 21st. And the city of Milbury is committed to working with the Honorable Council General of Malta to encourage profound connections between the Maltese community and the people of the city of Milbury. Whereas, the city looks forward to a continued partnership and friendship with Malta as we work together to promote a rich mutual understanding through cultural exchanges. And whereas, on Malta's Independence Day, we pay special tribute to the Maltese-American community for their contributions to the city of Milbury. And whereas, Milbury is proud to be home of the office of the Honorable Council General of Malta, and we are appreciative of the important services provided in our region. And now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2025, as Malta Independence Day. And thank you, Council General Vella, for joining us this evening.
Very good. So, it was a Sunday, so we couldn't meet on a Sunday, right? September 21st. All right. So, members of the council, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, good evening. Thank you very much for the invitation and the recognition. This is indeed a very special occasion. We are celebrating and commemorating a birthday, just like we celebrate the birthday of the United States on July 4th. So, it happens that Malta's birthday is on September 21st. Malta gained its independence from Britain on Monday, the 21st day of September, 1964, 61 years ago. It was a grandiose occasion with large military parades, festivities, flotillas at the Grand Harbour, fireworks, and ceremonious accolades at the highest levels. It was truly a historic moment when the Union Jack was lowered one last time, and the flag of Malta was officially raised for the first time in the presence of many dignitaries and thousands of people who came to bear witness this historic moment. It was truly a joyous occasion, and yet, a peaceful one. Not every independence is gained in a peaceful manner. We in the United States can attest to that. The one for Malta was gained by peaceful negotiations and cooperative spirits. However, the path to independence was not always peaceful. The island of Malta endured and experienced many wars and conflicts. History is dotted with hardships and destruction of lives and property due to wars. During a visit to Malta by US President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, he presented a scroll to Malta, amongst other, and it read, "Under repeated fire from the skies, Malta stood alone and unafraid in the center of the sea. One tiny bright flame in the darkness, a beacon of hope for the clearer days which have come. Malta's bright story of human fortitude and courage will be read by posterity with wonder and gratitude." That was FDR. Years followed the end of World War II, Malta saw thousands of its people immigrating to distant countries in search of a better life. The constant and unrelenting bombing rendered the island in harsh conditions and very difficult to make a living and raise a family. Most of the people went to Australia, Canada, and other faraway places. But the smart ones came to America, to California, and to Milbury, which brings us to the excellent relationship between the City Council and the city of Milbury with the Maltese-American community in Milbury. The sister city relationship, the various landmarks and artifacts, the reciprocal visits of dignitaries and VIPs, the celebrations of each other's anniversary are but a few examples of the wonderful relationship and mutual respect we have enjoyed for many years and for many more ahead of us. And with that, I say, thank you for the honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Louis. It's always nice to see you. You've always been a friend to Milbury, and we really enjoy having you here. Would you like to join us for a photo at the podium, please? Up next, we have proclamation proclaiming October 19th to October 25th, 2025, as United Against Hate Week. And we have the Youth Advisory Committee Chair Anderson Feng and also joining us on virtual, and also Sheri Perah from Youth Advisory Committee Vice Chair. Councilmember Nguyen?
Whereas, the city of Milbury reaffirms its dedication for fostering an inclusive, safe, and fair community where all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, nationality, and identity, are treated with respect and compassion. And whereas, acts of hatred and discrimination have no place in our city, and we recognize the importance of standing together to confront all the forms of prejudice, intolerance, and violence that seek to create division. And whereas, hate crimes and incidents have profound impact on both individuals and the broader community, weakening the core principles of justice, equality, and mutual respect that our city and nation strive to uphold. And whereas, United Against Hate Week reminds us of the strength found in unity, education, community action as we work to combat hate and build a culture of kindness, understanding, and empathy. And whereas, the city of Milbury stands with individuals and organizations across the region and nation that are committed to raising awareness, promoting tolerance, and taking a strong stance against hatred through conversation, education, active involvement. And whereas, during this important week, we encourage residents, businesses, schools, and institutions to participate in initiatives that foster inclusion, amplify the voices of underrepresented groups, and renew our shared commitment to build a future free from hate and division. And whereas, it is responsibility of every member of our community to ensure that we continue to move towards a society that celebrates diversity, rejects hate, and defends the right of all individuals to live without fear, harassment, and violence. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim October 19th to 25th, 2025, as United Against Hate Week.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have joined in virtual Anderson Feng, as well as Sheri Perah. City Clerk?
Good evening, Sheri Anderson Feng, and also Vice Chair Sheri Perah. Can you please unmute? And if you want to say a few words?
Hello.
Go ahead.
Thank you for inviting me to this meeting on this occasion. And I'd like to say that I stand with Milbury in this... with this proclamation. Thank you.
And the Vice Chair?
Thank you for inviting me as well. And I agree with Anderson. Thank you for doing this.
Okay. Very well. Thank you for joining us today. And I hope next time you can join us in person so that we can have a photo with you all together. Thank you very much for serving on the Youth Advisory Committee, both of you. All right. And then, we have a third item today, proclaiming the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And today, we have Dr. Barry Chooser and from California, Prostate Cancer Coalition Board Members and Radiation Oncologist. Whereas, prostate cancer is one of the most common cancer among men, affecting thousands of individuals and families across our community, our nation, and the world. And whereas, early detection through screening, research, and increased awareness significantly improves outcomes and save lives. And whereas, every year during the month of September, we recognize Prostate Cancer Awareness Month to emphasize the importance of education, prevention, and support for those diagnosed and affected by this horrible disease. And whereas, continued advancement in medical research and access to health care are essential in reducing the impact of prostate cancer, as well as improving the quality of life for survivors and their families. And whereas, individuals and communities are encouraged to participate in activities that raise awareness, provide support for prostate cancer patients, survivors, and the family members, and promote healthy lifestyles to reduce the risk of cancer. And whereas, the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their health care providers and make an informed decisions about whether to be treated or tested for prostate cancers. And whereas, the city of Milbury joins communities around our nation to increase awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decisions with their health care providers about early detections and testing for prostate cancer. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. I think I have discussed this with the public before, that right about seven years ago, I did lose my father-in-law in prostate cancer. And so, I'm one of the family members who has to go through with this, and I have a firsthand witness as to what it could do to an individual. So, early detection is key. It really is. And I encourage, as the oldest man on this council, I think this is the reason why I'm reading this proclamation, but more importantly, just to explain and to raise the awareness and how important this could be and how treatable this disease can be. Doctor? Thank you for joining us today.
What you had to say is really the heart of the matter. The points are clear. Prostate cancer kills, but if it's caught early enough, it can be curable. And one of the best ways of finding an early prostate cancer is PSA. There's a lot of talk about who should get screened and not screened, but I think everybody is feeling comfortable in saying at least you should get a baseline PSA. If your average risk, you're not... you shouldn't get one by the age of 50. If you fall into the high-risk group, which if you're black, or if you have a first-degree relative, have an uncle, father, who's had prostate cancer, particularly if it's before the age of 60, that puts you in the high-risk group, and you should get a PSA by 45. Some people even say by the age of 40. But please, that's the take-home message. If there's any doubt of what you should be doing, please review it with your health care provider. But thank you again for taking the opportunity to call attention to the prostate cancer problem.
Thank you, Doctor, for joining us this year, year after year, to raise awareness of this terrible disease who has affected lives of many families in this country. Thank you so very much. Would you please join us at a podium? Coming up next, we have proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And joining us today virtually, we have Sandeep Koti, Neve Koti, and Brave Renell Foundation. Councilmember Riley?
Whereas, the city of Milbury is committed to supporting the health and well-being of children in our community, and regulates our responsibility to raise awareness about critical health issues. And whereas, cancer remains one of the leading causes of death by disease for children in the United States, with approximately 44 children diagnosed with cancer each day, and one in 285 American children receiving a cancer diagnosis by age 20. And whereas, healthy care professionals, researchers, social workers, children-life specialists, and counteness volunteers dedicated their careers and lives to advancing pediatric cancer care, conducting vital research, and providing compassionate support to affected family. And whereas, wherever children, every child deserves the opportunity to grow, learn, play, and dream without the shadow of cancer. And our collective commitment to this has honors both who we have lost and those who continue to fight. Now, therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 25th, 2025, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I want to share some stories with you. For more than decades, I saved my hair to delay when for kids, lots of love, because those children wouldn't have a chemotherapy, they lost hair. So, if you think you have healthy hair, please save it, don't wait for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. And joining us virtually, we have Sandeep and Naf Koti from Brave Renell Foundation.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members. My name is Sandeep Koti. I am the father of Neve, and one of the founders of Neve Koti and Brave Renell Foundation. I want to sincerely thank the city of Milbury for proclaiming September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Three years ago, my son Neve was diagnosed with a rare aggressive brain tumor called DIPG. We were told after diagnosis, go home and make memories. And it was a devastating loss. We lost him to this disease, and since then, our lives have been dedicated to honoring his memory and fighting for other children and families walking this same difficult path. Our foundation was created in memory of both Neve and Ronald, who is also from Bay Area, to carry forward their legacy of courage and compassion. In just three years, we've grown into a strong voice for families, representing them at both the federal and state levels. We've advocated for childhood cancer research funding, supporting legislation, and spoken directly with California senators, congressmen, and assemblymen to make sure children like Neve and Ronald are not forgotten. And we don't have any more cases like that and more families who have an empty chair at their dinner table. This proclamation is more than symbolic. It shows families that their struggles are seen and that their children matter. On behalf of our foundation and the families we serve, I thank you again for your leadership and your commitment to shining a light on pediatric cancer. Together, we can bring hope and drive meaningful change for children facing this devastating disease. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Koti. Losing family members to cancer is never easy, whether it's a child or a parent, any loved one. So, we deeply felt the sorrow of your loss, and we understand how difficult it is. And thank you for coming to share your story. It's been very powerful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have proclamation proclaiming the month of September as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. And we have Councilmember Rinaldi.
Whereas, emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment. And whereas, local emergency managers, emergency managers across all sectors, community leaders, state governments, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and US territories. And whereas, emergency managers across the United States and US territories are charged with establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effectively direct, coordinate, and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts. And whereas, the mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery align with the core capabilities identified in the National Preparedness Goal. And whereas, the emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, professionalism, and protecting the public. And whereas, the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now, therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilmember. And joining us today, we have CCFD Risk and Resiliency Specialist, Deana Gunning. Thank you for joining us. We also have our own San Mateo County Emergency Services Coordinator, Bill Riley, joining us this evening. Please take us to the podium. We also have the Milbury CERT Coordinator and volunteer, Cass Castle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's with gratitude that I'm up here tonight. I serve as the Emergency Manager for the city of Milbury. At capacity, I help coordinate our responses in disaster and so on. I also help develop the plans that we use, mitigation plans, or emergency response procedures, and so on, in coordination with all departments. Has to do with Public Works, Police, Fire, and whoever else, Finance and everything. We work through an emergency operations center when necessary, and that training is ongoing on an annual basis. One of the things that's really important is that we work collaboratively, not only with our neighboring cities, but the county as well, under their operational area concept. With us tonight is Central County Fire Department, Deana Gunning and Cass Chow, who also work very closely with us. And we work through delivering many of our emergency information through our Milbury CERT program, which has been very active for a number of years.
Thank you, Bill. Ms. Gunning?
Thank you so much, Mayor Feng and councilmembers. We so appreciate your support in this proclamation and designating September as Emergency Management Awareness Month. We also know it's Preparedness Month. We just had CERT officially, or CERT Week, and we continue to strive to become a stronger, more resilient community through our Community Emergency Response Team trainings, our public education and outreach programs, to not only deliver that information, but to help people become more aware, making sure that they subscribe to our alerting system through SMC Alerts, to take training, to prepare themselves, get go-bags ready, to get engaged, and really work together to build those resilient communities and neighborhoods. We just experienced a small earthquake recently. And for those of you that were subscribed to the My Shake app, you got that notification at nearly 3:00 AM. And it was very loud and woke us all up that were subscribed to that alert. But it's also a good sign that it works. It is life-saving to know if we have precious seconds to be able to drop cover and hold on during those times. So, we suggest you also get those apps. And we can't impress enough upon the community how important that is to not only learn about those things, learn what to do before, during, and after. It will help us all recover more quickly as we move forward with any type of disaster that impacts our area. So, again, we appreciate your recognition this evening. So again, we appreciate your recognition this evening, and we hope to see you all at the next training. Our Fall CERT Training begins September thirtieth, which is just next week. And then we also have our Winter Training that will begin for the month of February in 2026, right here in Millbrae. So thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gunning. Mr. Castle, can you get, all right, thank you so much. It's always nice to, you know, have the CERT Team and the Emergency Response Team, knowing that you guys are here, training our volunteers, and keeping our community safe, and offering this CERT Program in multilingual as well, knowing that we have a diverse community helping in an emergency situation, being able to address the situation in the language that accustom to our constituency. Thank you so much for, you know, your volunteerism and putting all these programs together. Any other councilmembers? Go ahead, Mr. Ronald.
Thanks, Mayor Fong. Just wanted to thank the folks here that actively participate in the CERT Program, and can't think a better reminder or motivator for everyone to join CERT that has not gone through the training, other than that earthquake that we just experienced. So can't find a better group of people. You'll meet neighbors within your community, talk about accessible. It's in multiple languages now, and most importantly, it's free. Costs you nothing, so highly recommend it. Thanks, guys.
Anyone else? Please join us for a photo. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the SFO Future Development Plan. Joining us, we have Christopher Di Prima, Acting Airport Planning Manager at the SFO.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, especially thank you, Councilmember Ronald. He got to hear this already once and invited me here to give the talk again to the city council. So you're going to hear it for a second time, Airport Land Use Committee, and now here. But for everybody else, I hope that it's informative. I should also mention before I begin that this is an informational presentation only. It is not an official public comment, just to be clear on that first slide. So I know that you are all very aware of what the San Francisco International Airport is. We are your neighbor, and I'll say on a personal note, I also grew up in a suburb right next to a large airport, in my case, O'Hare. Funny to be here talking about such things. But we are the thirteenth busiest currently in the United States, thirty-sixth busiest in the world. We accommodated fifty-two-point-three million passengers last calendar year, and that is well on our way back to the fifty-seven million annual passengers that were served through SFO in 2019 before the pandemic. We are a job center, obviously, about twenty-eight thousand on airport jobs and about six-point-one billion in business revenue generated at the airport in fiscal year 2021, which was the last year for which that report was generated. And our future forecast will see us growing to accommodate seventy-one million annual passengers based on our existing runway layout and geometry. So what is the Airport Development Plan? Well, fundamentally, it is a long-range planning study, and what that does is it guides the direction of our future developments at SFO. It is a spiritual successor to the nineteen-eighty-nine Master Plan, and I'll talk a little bit about the eighty-nine Master Plan and some of the ongoing projects that came out of that. In fact, this is just a little bit of an overview visually of some of the ongoing projects that were executed under either the Master Plan itself or some of its succeeding planning efforts. Can see a lot of taxiway compliance improvements, as well as some of the more visible vertical projects. For example, the On-Airport Hotel that was completed a few years ago, our Terminal One redevelopment, which we're extremely proud of, the brand-new Harvey Milk Terminal One, which has set, I think, a new standard for guest experience at a U.S. airport while honoring a civil rights icon. As well, on the north side of the campus, our long-term parking garage number two was an ongoing project that was completed under a few years ago. And currently, yes, we are still working on projects from that nineteen-eighty-nine Master Plan. That should tell you something, I'm not sure what. But the Westfield Cargo redevelopment, so this is really replacing a lot of very old warehouse cargo facilities in what we call our Westfield Campus. It's airtrain accessible, but it's very important to the efficient operation of the airport. These buildings were built in the nineteen-fifties and nineteen-sixties. They're not fit for purpose, and so they're currently being removed. You may see some cranes pop up just above the, over the freeway. Next slide. So those are our ongoing projects, but what's in the ADP or the Airport Development Plan? So the ADP includes a set of projects called the Recommended ADP. So that's the subject of Comprehensive Environmental Review. There are a lot of projects in it, but I like to talk about some of the headliners, some of the most visible projects where you think SFO ADP, you'll be thinking the big changes to the airport that you'll be able to see. The first one is a new boarding area for contact gates at the airport. So contact gates, right? If any of you flew Alaska or Virgin America in its last year of existence, you will have experienced the beauty of a bus gate operation at SFO. So when we are quite busy, we do have to rely on bus gates. We are moving, we're intending to build a new boarding area to make sure that we have contact gates for all of our passengers. Redevelopment of our central garage, that's a very old, very innovative, but very aged facility now. That's the garage that sits right in the middle of all four terminals, and redeveloping that into a multimodal center, including public and employee parking, as well as improved transit and improved vehicular access. A new consolidated rental car center. We built one of the first consolidated rental car centers in the world. That means we now have one of the oldest. And if you or a family member has rented a car from SFO recently, you'll have seen that that facility is a little bit undersized to what it needs to be. And finally, expanding our all-electric airtrain system, as well as ensuring that we have enough room for maintenance and storage of all of those cars to transport people around the airport efficiently. Really, what this is intended to do is accommodate our forecast passenger demand within the existing airfield and airspace constraints. So no new runway expansion, no modifications to the underlying capacity of the runways. It's really just making sure that we don't have to resort to bus gates or to very long queues on 101 to get into the airport. It's bringing those things into balance with what the runways can already deliver us. And of course, all SFO projects are funded within the airport itself. We must adhere to federal regulations in terms of funding, which means that no funding comes from San Mateo County residents. So that's what it is. What is it trying to do? It is, we hear about SFO repeatedly as like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Once you start at one end, you, once you get to the other side, you've got to start at the other end again. And so really, the goal of the ADP is to continue the modernization of SFO, to make sure that your airport, this airport that serves our region, and I hope is the pride of our region, continues to be so. We do that by really focusing on the guest and enhancing that guest experience, and that includes beyond just the passengers as well. And finally, again, matching our boarding area and gate supply and our landside facilities to the capacity of that existing runway system. So let's see what some of this looks like. What the ADP does not do, again, it does not change runway configurations or flight paths. It does not increase the airport's property footprint, and it will not increase runway capacity. Again, the runway system is already capable of, and we have seen this, again, I'll go back to that Alaska bus gate example. We have seen plenty of occasions where the number of people showing up at the airport is beyond what our terminal can accommodate without resorting to some of these triage maneuvers that are just not up to the guest experience that I think you or I expect when we go through our local airport. So we do have a couple of fun visualizations here. So this is what the Recommended ADP looks like in space. And so again, Boarding Area H is a new, that new all-airside concourse, essentially feeding into the existing Boarding Area G. So you think about that as an all-airside facility, no new terminal side to that. And then the central hub, of course, in the middle of the concourse, in the middle of the four terminal system. Up to the north, you can see the rental car center north of San Bruno Avenue, along with a new long-term parking facility, and then the conversion of our existing RCC rental car center into just a normal garage, as well as a few, I mean, all projects are equally exciting, but you can see a few that are, you know, maybe don't get the fame that they really deserve. For example, making sure that our airtrain stations are large enough to accommodate all the passengers we need, moving around a firehouse to make room for some airfield improvements, some little stuff that's in there as well. So here is just a rendering of one potential ADP project. So this is a way to redevelop the international terminal building to make its operation more efficient. This is one of those headliner projects. This is boarding, the proposed concept for Boarding Area H. You can see those six new wide-body contact gates sitting out there on the site of a current office building and cargo facility. Our central hub, this is going to be one that is absolutely fascinating, and I think that it's going to set the airport as an exemplar for how we can improve upon what we have and really increase the ability of the airport to take in the vehicles that we need to accommodate the passengers so that we don't have these backups onto 101. It would include, for example, a consolidated bus center right in the middle so that you could come to it from any terminal. Great for bus operations in a place where we could put amenities. So if you look at, if you Google the SFO ADP, you will notice that the draft final Airport Development Plan document was published in 2016, and I believe that some members of the airport were even here back in 2016 to mention that we were publishing it. Now, we did have a little bit of a pandemic delay, but we did perform issue of an NOP, Notice of Preparation of Environmental Impact Report back in nineteen. Public hearing and availability was in earlier this year in 2025. We are hoping for adoption in later this year. And then implementation. So this was the easy part. How are you going to implement all of this really cool stuff? It's really triggered by demand. So it's when we're seeing issues with the existing facility, again, the bus gates would be sort of one of those canaries in a coal mine. So those projects get triggered when demand. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us today. And Lady Manager, anyone else on the council have any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Ronald.
Thanks for coming out, Mr. Di Prima. And thank you to the staff at SFO for being so readily available to make this presentation happen. Being that we're next-door neighbors, I find it very important that our council be aware of what projects or future plans that you folks have at SFO. There's no doubt that we live in the technology hub of the world, and you guys play a crucial key to the economical environment here of being able to bring people in and out of our area. One thing I didn't see in the presentation that was kind of touched upon at the Airport Land Use Committee was it revolved around rental cars, and it was another track, or not rental cars, but Ubers, Lifts, and other taxi services having another track around that central hub. I don't know if you could touch upon that, because one of the biggest challenges we have here in Millbrae is Millbrae Avenue backing up. So you can imagine, we've done our fair share of housing and development out here. So adding to that congestion, sometimes we have Uber, Lyft drivers staging in that area. So if you could just touch upon that, I think it would be helpful for the council here.
Of course. Thank you. So first of all, you mentioned the additional ring road in the center of the terminal complex. So part of that central hub proposed project that I mentioned is to take what's currently the tunnel level of the central garage and put a new road down there. So the new garage would be skinnier than it is today, and that would daylight a ring around there, and that would give you a third curb side essentially at that lower level. And so what that would allow us to do is move the modes around to make sure that we're not getting backups onto the main 101 ramps. So you also asked, though, about Uber, Lyft staging around Millbrae Avenue. So this is something that was really a byproduct of the change that we made to move TNC, Uber and Lyft pickup into the garage back in 2019. We changed the dynamics of how many of those vehicles that serve pickups are coming from what was called rematch. So a drop-off goes right to a pickup versus coming from the staging lot. So at the time, we did some mitigations. We opened up a third staging lot up in San Bruno Avenue to make sure that there was balance there. But we know that the long-term solution needs to be better management of the queuing system so that TNC drivers aren't coming down to the staging lots when there's no room. Because what you've probably noticed is one of the times where it's busiest at those staging lots and backing up onto Millbrae Avenue is not a peak hour for aircraft operation. And that's because those drivers are arriving, a lot of them are arriving, and yet there's very, just a trickle of pickups happening, so very few are leaving. And so the idea behind what we're going to be doing to mitigate is implementing a virtual queue, very similar to what we did with San Francisco taxis. And the idea there is you would not be allowed to approach the airport until you had a spot, a guaranteed spot in one of those staging lots. That's really what's designed to alleviate the Millbrae Avenue issue.
Thank you. Any questions from council on that?
Any other questions from anyone in the council? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I had one other question about the property that the airport owns in Millbrae behind the BART station between, I guess, Rollins Road and Millbrae Avenue and 101. And it's, I think, mostly been used for like construction, staging, storage. Is there any potential change of use that may happen at some point to that area? Is that considered in the ADP?
No changes foreseen by the ADP.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember, what?
Do you guys have plans for robo-taxis and Waymo? I'm just curious if that's in your ADP as well.
Sure. So the ADP was constructed in 2014 and 2015, so the ADP itself did not contemplate robo-taxis. However, what we've seen over time is a relatively stable mode shift, mode mix, at least since the BART station opened, between single-party vehicles like taxis, Uber and Lyft getting dropped off, and multi-party vehicles. And so part of the idea behind the central hub is making sure that we build enough of that close-in terminal ring road to make sure that we have the ability over time to move the modes around. Now, if you're talking much more short term, I know that it's been in the news that there is an automated vehicle permit pilot program issued. That is a limited pilot at the moment, and that's happening on the north side of the airport.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Riley?
So I was wondering, when you start doing this construction, where the car going to parking?
Oh, for the central hub? So that's a really good question. We're going to need to be really careful about the phasing of that to make sure that we don't take we don't take out too much capacity because, you know, what'll happen is that people will switch probably to a taxi or an Uber and Lyft, and that would just exacerbate the problem. So it's going to be a phased construction to minimize that loss. But that'll be future planners to figure out.
Great. The new parking looks very good. We're excited to looking forward. Thank you.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question there. I'll go back to you in a second there, Councilmember Rinaldi. The Vice Mayor mentioned a moment ago about the site that you have in the city of Millbrae that SFO has been using for a long time. What's the long-term vision for that site? And how can we, I mean, that's a valuable, an extremely valuable piece of real estate, certainly, you know, proximity to the airport, proximities to all the major transit. And currently, it's my understanding it's being used as a sort of a construction lay-down, for lack of better words. You know, if there is any other opportunities that we can discuss more strategically, how to, you know, better use some of the valuable real estate would be extremely helpful if, you know, the SFO management, the director's level, if there's any opportunity for discussions in terms of the future visions of that, I think that would be collaborative.
Absolutely.
All right. Councilmember?
Just two quick things closing out on my side here. First thing I wanted to ask about advanced air mobility. I know it's a topic that you invited me out to SFO to attend, and I know it's kind of the future, flying taxis that will take you over to the airport. I know there's been some stories in the news about some of these taking flight maybe this year or next year in foreign countries. And I know in discussions with you, you said that it's pretty far off from reality happening at SFO. My question to you is, has been any more talk in regards to advanced air mobility? And last but not least, being that we're so close to SFO, love to partner with you folks to learn more about your development and stay connected with you folks. So if you do have future meetings, I'm sure our council members here would love to be invited.
All right. Thank you. And I'll start with that, and I just say, you know, we really appreciate the partnership and love having a great relationship with our neighbors. Certainly, whatever we can do to keep that relationship. As for advanced air mobility, I think it is a very nascent industry still. I think it, I'd be hard pressed to call it an industry quite yet since they haven't quite worked out all the details. I think that you will see pilot programs in the next few years. And what our airport director and Millbrae resident, Mike Corcoran, has said is, you know, we want to be on the leading edge but not the bleeding edge. So we are definitely engaged because we do not want this to be something that happens to us. We want to be part of it. And of course, you know, inviting you and the council to, you know, thinking about how we want to think about advanced air mobility is definitely a part of that. I will just say that the ADP itself does not include any AAM accommodations on its own. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I do have one public comment that I will take, but we have Ann Schneider. And thank you, Mr. Di Prima.
Ann Schneider, thank you, Mayor. I live on the 400 block of Palm Avenue, and I was your Airport Roundtable representative for nine years. I have read both the 89, the earlier EIR, and the most recent EIR. And in all San Francisco Airport EIRs, including Sea Level Rise, it says in terms of Millbrae that there are overriding considerations, that Millbrae will get the negative effects of each of these projects, including the 1989 projects. But there's nothing they can do they cannot mitigate. So I thank the Vice Mayor and the Mayor for bringing up Site 7. It's Site 7 right there. It's heavy construction. I work in the recycling field. Heavy construction vehicles are going to tear up the brand-new roads of Gateway. And for those brand-new trucks, it already required us to reduce the number of tree coverage at the Gateway project. If this project, if the airport were something that came up post-1970 and the invention of California Environmental Quality Act, we would get mitigation from SFO. Instead, we get nothing. And there's a few things I just want to correct. One, staff said that SFO funds itself. Well, the first act that Congressman Mullen did as a congressman was to get $31 million of federal funding to SFO for roofing and other projects. So those are all of our tax dollars going to San Francisco. The other one, when we talk about we're not going to add more runway capacity, it means that the airplanes will get bigger. The bigger the airplane, the heavier the airplane, the greater the back blast noise, which is what most impacts Millbrae, a portion of Burlingame and Hillsborough. None of that is mitigated. And sadly, the studies came out and said, oh, well, it's not as bad. But I'll tell you, last night, any hot temperature inversion layer from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock, it was a constant wave. I'm on your website looking at it, and it's not showing the right data. City Council, I know you think we can buy nice with SFO, get something from them. We're going to get something from them when we stand up for ourselves. And to me, the first thing we can do is get Site 7 back. Right now, in the Sea Level Rise plan, they're using Site 7 for heavy equipment for sea-level rise, so mud, concrete, riprap, basically big, heavy, dirty things at our gateway on that. That should be something else. It should be given back to us as mitigation for frankly 100 years. And I'll close with this. Right now, the city of Millbrae went out to RFP to rebuild the SFO pump station clearing out La Mita Canal. When the airport and 101 was expanded in the late '40s, early '50s, it completely cut off our creek's ability to drain. And yet here now, and according to my conversation with the city manager, we, the people of Millbrae, are paying for SFO's pump station. There's something wrong with that. There should be a better job with that. And I'll, a final close. The county gets at least five or six revenue streams from the airport, hotel tax. Because that hotel was approved in 89, we had no comment. That increased our noise. Six, the county makes six revenue streams. We should get that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. So I think this is an informational item. Thank you, everybody, for our comments and the education. Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Di Prima. Moving on to item number two, agenda overview and staff briefing. This evening, we have Acting City Manager Mike Sung joining us. Thank you for filling in.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Feng. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members and members of the public. Mike Sung, Acting City Manager. Today, we'll be going over the upcoming city and community events. I would like to add that Millbrae is a very vibrant community. We have a lot of activities going on. We just had a beet spruce and vines on Thursday, which was very well attended. And also, we had a coastal cleanup, and thank you to all the people that showed up for that. Really appreciate that this last Saturday. So on to the upcoming events. We have the Mid-Autumn Festival presented by the Millbrae Cultural Community Committee, and that happens on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And on Sunday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Downtown Millbrae on Broadway. Come to the 2025 Millbrae Mid-Autumn Festival, where ancient traditions and modern festivities come together to create a unique and memorable experience. Enjoy performances, food, and lanterns while celebrating harvest gratitude and family unity. I know I will be bringing my parents over this weekend. Another event that we have is Funding Your Future, exploring capital options for your business, and that's occurring next Tuesday, September 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Millbrae Recreation Center. This is presented by the Millbrae Economic Development Advisory Committee, or EDAC, in partnership with Renaissance. Equip, and this equips entrepreneurs and small business owners with resources on financing options, preparing loan applications, and connecting with lenders. Learn how to secure the capital essential for starting, growing, and scaling your business. And then a little bit further out, we have the Japanese Culture Festival presented by the Japanese Culture Festival Committee and Millbrae Chamber of Commerce. And that will be happening Sunday, October 5th, from 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the Millbrae Library Plaza. Enjoy performances, light music, traditional Japanese dance, taiko, and martial arts. Food that we'll have is musubi, bento, sake, shaved ice, and more. There'll be lots of exhibits from origami, bonsai, calligraphy, tea ceremony, and of course, vendors. So we encourage you all to stop by for that as well. And then finally, on October 10th, on Friday, we're going to have another Millbrae Goes to the Movies, and this time it's going to be Wicked. This is a prelude to The Wizard of Oz, tells the story of Glinda the Good Witch and the wicked witch of the East. I haven't personally seen this. I've actually seen the musical, which I thought was great. So I would encourage everybody to come and take a look. It's a great family event, and it's going to be held indoors this time at the Millbrae Recreation Center. Also, would like to make an announcement. Congratulations to Irene Herr, freshman golf athlete at Mills High School, for her recognition by the San Mateo County Daily Journal as Athlete of the Week for the week of September 16th, 2025. Irene was honored for her breakout performance as Mills High School's top performing golfer in their undefeated 3-0 start, including a standout, very impressive, one-under-34 round. Good luck to the Mills golf team with the rest of their season. And that concludes my update.
Okay. Thank you so much, Acting City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Sung. And we also have City Attorney Laurie Liu joining us this evening and have a report out on tonight's closed sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the city council met and closed session on Agenda Items 1 and 2 regarding the two proposed settlement agreements, excuse me, regarding, yes, two proposed settlement agreements with the pharmaceutical manufacturers regarding the opioid litigation. And the council unanimously authorized the city manager to take all necessary actions to ensure the city's participation in both settlements and to elect direct payment for the prescribed uses. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the report out, and that wraps up item number two. Moving on to item three, which is the approval of minutes. We have closed session meeting minutes on July 8th, 2025, and also irregular meeting minutes on July 8th, 2025. Any council discussions or comments? Okay. Any public comment? All right. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Rinaldi and Councilmember Nguyen, your votes, please.
The two settlements are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, which we don't have, any oral report from city committees and commissions of chair. Moving on to public communication. This is the portion of the agenda reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. And every speaker will have two minutes this evening. I have 12, 13 speakers this evening, I believe, and so two minutes. And the speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor to the public. We'll start with Eling Fuente, followed by Allison Karuda.
Hello, Mayor and councils. And I, my name is Elaine Fuente. I'm here again to speak on behalf of many dog owners who want dog park in Millbrae. I have a collect paper and online signatures. So far, we have 248 signature. The number's still going up. I don't know how many of you have dogs. But if you do, you know, the challenge, Millbrae has no dog park. Why it's important to have a dog park? First, health and behavior benefit. Dogs need exercise and socialization. An off-leash park helps them to burn energy, reduce anxiety, and become better behaved pet at home. Second, safer and cleaner community. Without a dog park, dogs end up off-leash in unsafe area, street, playground, open field. So a design park keeps dogs secure and makes other share spaces cleaner and safer for everyone. Third, building community. A dog park isn't just for dogs, it's for people as well. Owners meet, friendship form, neighbors connect, it strengthen our sense of community. So for those reasons, I strongly urge the council to create an exclusive off-leash dog park in Millbrae. Mill Estepark would be ideal, but even sitting aside hours at Central Park would be a huge step forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Allison Karuda, followed by Peiling Yepp.
Good evening. My name is Allison Karuda. I'm a recent transplant from Fresno. While in Fresno, we lived near Fresno State, which offered a large amount of green space for our families and pets to enjoy the playground.
Get close to the mic. Thank you. Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Since coming here, early on, we used, my husband and I found green hills and also small grassy area in front of the library. But then we were introduced to Central Park. Central Park opened our eyes to a new community of dog owners and other people who are interested in being around dogs. We've had kids come up to our, to us, asking for their pets, for their children to pet or to play with our animals. We, as responsible owners, have taken steps to make sure that we clean up after the dogs. Also, we all, we are watchful of any activities that might happen between the dogs, and we would try to defuse it before anything got out of control. So we do request like an off-leash hours because that gives them the freedom to exercise, do socialization. Also, we do watch them, so we hopefully are eliminating any posed threat, I guess, to other park owners. So we would like, like morning office, off-leash hours, like from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and evening hours from like 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., which would allow people who work the opportunity to use this time to be with their pets versus with other park owners. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comment. We have Peiling Yepp, followed by Amelia Evans.
Hi, my name is Peiling. I'm a dog owner as well, and like to ask if we can add to the agenda for either the city or the parks and rags regarding a off-leash hour, like in the Center Park, Central Park. Like people before me said, we don't have one right now, like a dog park. But like, I think the easiest way and cheapest way is to just have some off-leash hour with some signs, thinking that like from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the morning, maybe like 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., that, you know, the dog can run free in the far corner away from the play structure. So we don't want to like intimidate or think the dog might bite the kids or something. So away from the play structure on the far corner and have some hours for the dogs to roam around free. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Amelia Evans? Yeah, we have Austin. If it's on Zoom, we can take it.
I do not see a speaker by the name of Amelia Evans. Maybe Austin Evans? Okay. Austin Evans, please accept the mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Amelia, and I'm here today to talk about something really important to me and my dog Barry. I've been walking Barry to Central Park since I was seven years old. He is eight now, and as he's getting older, it's more important that he gets a good amount of exercise to keep him healthy. My dog and I walk him to Central Park where most other people living nearby My dog and I walk him to Central Park where most other people living nearby do. It has become a community at Central Park where dog owners, dogs, and even just passersby can socialize while letting their dogs exercise. For me, it has been good to be outside, especially after a long day at school. And for others, especially I know those with big dogs, is a great way for their dogs to get the hours of exercise they need each day. I know people have been getting tickets lately for having their dogs off-leash, but where else can we go? There is no designated off-leash park in Millbury. I hope that we can figure out a way to keep our dog community, whether that means having a section of Central Park be for the dogs or having off-leash hours. Thank you very much for your time and for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we have Anna Pitchler, followed by Sharon Lee.
Okay. Hi, thanks for having me speak today. I'm gonna, my name is Anna and I live in Millbury. I'd like to take a moment to continue advocating for the establishment of a designated off-leash hours for dogs at Central Park. As you know, currently, Millbury does not have an active dog park, and Central Park has naturally become the gathering places for local dog owners. Residents who don't have yards, this park is a central space for exercising and socializing our dogs. Over the past several years, neighbors have been using this park in this way without major incident, and it's helped to build a strong sense of community. Right now, however, there is no allowance for off-leash use, and enforcement of leash laws has been increased. This has created tension despite the fact that the majority of dog owners have been using the space responsibly for several years. Establishing, establishing structured off-leash hours, for example, two to three hours in the morning and two to three hours in the evening, would provide a nice balance for the whole community. This would ensure dogs have a safe place for in designated time to play while preserving the shared enjoyment of the park for all community members. There's also clear precedent for this approach. Washington Park has implemented off-leash hours successfully without requiring costly renovations, just updating and having clear signage. Central Park could do the same, offering a low-cost, practical solution that meets the needs of both dog owners and non-dog owners alike. I am, urge city council to consider this request and not only support responsible pet ownership, but also recognize how Central Park can continue to be being used by the neighbors together to serve the diverse community needs that we have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sharon Lee, followed by Zoe Bertazar.
Good evening, council members. I'm Sharon. I moved here 20, more than 22 years ago, before I have my kids. And then my kids grew up here. We always have activities around Central Park. They, they sit on the grass, they play in the playground, and then they started their first soccer training with the, yes, kids love soccer and AYSO, everything. And then when they were in the Millbury Leo's Club, when they're in the middle school and high school, they help with the movie nights, everything. And I even brought my dog there. The reason I have my dogs during pandemic time, all kids are home. My kids were very depressed at the time, so we thought about having, I mean, having a dog. And eventually, we have our Coco. I've been walking her around, but not, I mean, on the streets in the neighborhood. People, I found that people are so friendly. I never knew that I could connect with people beyond schools, beyond my workplace. People of interest in each other's life, but when you're on the street, we only talk briefly. When we're in the park, we were able to share our life stories. I get to know so many parents. But the first parent I know was like, when I was walking in Seal Point Park in San Mateo, he happens to be a math teacher. And then his daughter is also about the same age as my kids, so we started to have a lot of common interests, topics to talk about. And then I get to know other parents who have grown-up kids, who went to college, finished college, and who's been traveling. When my kids are traveling, like this past semester internationally, like doing a study abroad program, I got so many advice from the daughter. So I get to know so many parents who are, have young families, who have like grown-up kids, and then who are also senior. But I found I have, I used to have to take my dogs to Washington Park in Birmingham and Central Park in San Mateo because they have dog leash hours. I love there, but then I feel like I'm a visitor. I'm not a real resident there. I go there, I share a little bit, you know, of my, what happened. But then here is wonderful. I can connect. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Zoe Bertazar, followed by Judy Louis.
I'm going to change the subject from. I heard that you, you are planning for a garden, and you have some issues with naming the garden. So you mentioned that you want to name it Japan, Japanese Gardens. So I would like to share this point, that the Golden Gate Japanese Gardens are special and very unique. And they have a character. However, Millbury is a diverse city with, with diverse ethnicity. So I would suggest that choosing a neutral name or title. For example, Garden of Love, Garden of Life, or the Millbury Gardens. Simply, that's all.
Thank you for your comment. We have Judy Louis, followed by Alice Quall.
Good evening, Mayor Fang and all the council members. The Millbury City Council has planned a new community park aiming to provide a person, green space for residents to enjoy the nature and relax together. To make this park more representative, the city should invite the Millbury residents to participate in the naming process. Citizens' creative contribution crucial. We hope the name reflects Millbury's history, culture, natural beauty. These two names I have suggest, Millbury Garden or Magnolia Garden. Also, another suggestion for residents can submit their name choice for the following method: paper ballot voting, online electronic voting. Millbury is a vibrant and multicultural city. We hope this new garden will be more than just a place to leisure, but also a symbol of community unity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Judy. We have Alice Quall, followed by Susan Trent.
Good evening, Mayor and all council members and all people here. First of all, Millbury Gardens make everyone exciting, but also bring up deep problems. Me, as, I consider here is my hometown, okay? So I find Millbury should be very united and everyone participated, but seems it's something I find unusual. This new park, number one, I really challenging sister city committee. They are overwhelming all our Millbury residents and our city council, cities by law, because they say they have been missing information of us. They have been trying to name the garden for two years, which is wrong because they don't have a right to name the name of the sister city. And also, I read all over the sister cities' agenda. I don't know if all of you, our lawyer, aware of, they automatically, they need move Taiwan as our friendship cities. I don't know if you guys know, and which is wrong. I really challenging our city, our lawyer, and council to review what the sister cities' agenda, are they overwhelming our Millbury residents, our city council, our cities ordinarily? And the second, and because this new name, I find something good is that we find is some problem here. Someone using this, the name of the garden, as something trying to divide Millbury and say a lot overwhelming our Millbury citizens and trying to under, under and doing something, you can read all the sister cities' agenda. You'll find all the problem. Please pay attention to it. And I, of course, we need to have a public and participate for the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quall. We have Susan Trent, followed by Li Xihuang.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My opposition to the name, proposed name of the garden is purely based on the fairness to the Millbury residents or tax players. Nothing relating to racism or racial discrimination. Why not just name it as, for example, Millbury Garden? It will be simple, but have a sense of belonging to the city and to each and everyone within the city. And I think not anything but not a particular race or culture or it does, it doesn't be represent Millbury at all. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you for your comment. Li Xihuang, followed by Irene.
Good evening, Mayor Fang and council member and people here. I would like to make a few comment regarding the naming of the new park. Our city will fund all construction costs of the park, and Japan did not contribute a single penny. Therefore, the park should not be named after Japan or Japanese city. Harvard and Stanford alumni have donated hundreds of millions of dollars, yet Harvard and Stanford would not use their alumnus as their university name. Furthermore, there's no reason to promote on Japan with zero contribution. Our city is a multicultural one. Using foreign country name can easily create impression of favoring one culture over others. We should strive to avoid favoritism. For example, our celebration of Chinese New Year and Mid-Autumn Festival, which are also celebrated in some Asian country, a land culture event to avoid perception of bias toward Chinese culture. The Chinese New Year is all, is now referred to as Lunar New Year. So our city have several sister city, and we cannot name all of them after them. So it's unwise to name our park after foreign country or foreign city. I strongly suggest our new garden should name Millbury Garden or Spring Garden, something like that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Irene, followed by Anne Schneider.
Good evening, Mayor Fang and all council members. I'm gonna spend a minute on, we had an earthquake yesterday. Were you guys scared? Anyway, about the name for the new garden, here are some suggestions. It may be a good idea that Millbury resident to participate and select an appropriate name for the garden. Name for the garden, it should have our city name on the garden or one of the street names like Magnolia in Millbury. Suggestion for the name of the garden, Millbury Garden, as the rest of the lady mentioned earlier, Magnolia Garden, Millbury Grand Garden. Plants wide, widely suggested, collect some plants that won't cause Millbury resident upper respiratory allergies. And the garden should be a nice area for Millbury residents to relax, enjoy, and take a walk. This should be a really nice garden arrangement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anne Schneider, followed by John Chang.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, a couple of speakers gave some information, and I just want to clarify that. The information that was said was that Hanyu severed the relationship. That is not true. I'm going to bring you back to 2019, and we were going, five people from Millbury were invited by Hanyu for their 65th birthday. There was an activity that happened here at council chambers. Without pointing fingers, I'm just going to say it caused a bit of a kerfluffle, and that person was disinvited, and I went instead representing the city of Millbury along with two former mayors, Mayor Gottschalk and Mayor Janet Fogarty, and two sister city members. And again, the relationship is still there, as shown by the fact that five, four of us went last, last November. And in fact, three of you were planning on going, and then plans had to change. So again, I stepped in and went along with Kathleen Kamora, our school board president, Maggie Musa, and we brought a young person because the big goal with, with Hanyu is to develop more friendships between our children, more exchange programs, whether it's virtual and then eventually in person on that. So just to clarify that point from two weeks ago, I, I saw that you earlier celebrated the Stop Hate Month this month. And, and again, I understand the, the pain and back by some of the people here in Millbury. But I was also on council when we were debating what to happen with Palestine and Israel, and then to figure out what do we do within our city that is amongst us, in our city, in our place, in our time, not other countries, not in other places, and not in other times on that. So I encourage you to think about that. Sister city programs are for friendship. They're for healing. And there's, Lord knows, there's enough horrible things happening in the world right now, that this is an offer in friendship on that, and it really has that purpose. Sorry, we already have a Millbury garden already named, the Millbury Community Garden at Central Park. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. John Chang, followed by Catherine Quaid.
Good evening, Mayor Fang and council members. John Chen, and a resident of Millbury. I would like to mention, last week I didn't finish regarding the impact fee. I go to online Millbury Impact Fee, and I only see the project, only one project is related to to the transportation around the bar, yeah, and three or four related to park. I think it's, it's not the same weight because according to the impact fee definition, it's supposed to finance necessary capital improvements, such as roads, schools, and parks. And about the road, I heard the resident in Pinon, P-I-N-O-N, the Pinon, the south, southeast part of, southeast street in, between Millbury and Birmingham. They said that, I went there to see the potholes. The condition, road condition is very bad, and it's been five or 10 years, never been repaid, repayment. But Birmingham part is, is repaired, okay, repaired. So I'm thinking about that, and to pick up those, those, see, click fix. The most low, low condition have a potholes to fix that using the impact fee, okay? Or you can use that in transportation, for example. We have been talking for long years, okay, around the autonomous transportation or even between parks, okay, help, help seniors and childrens.
Thank you for your comment, John. Catherine Quaid, and then we'll move on to online speakers.
Good evening, everyone. It's me again.
Tonight, we heard the readings of two powerful proclamations, Malta Independence and their road to recovery, and we were proud enough to attend Malta and Mosta. It was a wonderful experience, learning about other people and other cultures. And the other one was United Against Hate. This should remind us all that sister cities work toward unifying cities and cultures throughout the world. The Hanyu Friendship Garden is not and should not be political. It is not about wars and conflicts from 70 years ago. It is not about apologies that were not made. Please let us move forward from our mistakes that we all made, every nation made in our The parks, all about wealth giving and forgiving people who are today. Please stay the course. We need the Hanyu Friendship Garden. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for the comment, Kathy. And online speaker, Irene. Dan Stecking being first.
Dan Stecking, please accept the mute.
Thank you, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. You know, it's, it's great to see so many Millbury residents speaking out about what they want, participating in their government. I'm going to talk about something a little, a little different. We've got 70 days until December 1, 19, December 1, 1941 was the anniversary of the Pearl Harbor bombing for the United States. In December 1, 1943 was the anniversary of the Cairo Declaration, where Chiang Kai-shek and Winston Churchill decided what they were going to do with Japan after the war. But December 1, 1943 was also one of the most important days in Millbury's history, albeit five years before it existed. That's the day when they found the first woolly mammoth in Millbury at the bay, in the Bay Shore during a Highlands apartment building development. Eventually, they found six different mammoth remains there that were, were caught in a peat bog during the Pleistocene period, and none of you probably remember, but all your kids probably do remember, probably do know, that Pleistocene period was between 2.5 million years ago and momentarily forgotten, but two really famous Pleistocene sites are the La Brea Tar Pits and the White Sands Museum. The San Mateo County Historical Museum has significant remains on site there. I think December 1, you guys should declare the Millbury Mammoth Day, and I think it should be led by the best dressed Millbury council member, and last year, I would have said it was Anders Fung, but I'm going to put a tie for Steve Rinaldi and Anders Fung there, and Millbury Mammoth Day could bring.
Thank you so much for the comment there, Dan. Thank you very much, especially that comment. Now we have Albert Yam.
And then the speak, next speaker is Albert Yam. Please accept the mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Hi, City Council. My name is Albert Yam, Millbury resident. I urge the City Council to release a fact sheet about the impact fee, because I still hearing residents questioning the use of fund for a garden. And I think, you know, my understanding is that, you know, with conversation inquiries about what the fund could be used with city staff, I think it's pretty clear to me, or you know, someone told me very clearly, it could only be used for the park, other than, you know, any of the infrastructure. Secondly, you know, I want to ask my fellow residents, you know, a couple of comments that pointed out, this is, you know, about the rights to name a garden, who has the rights to name the garden, about, you know, not representing the residents, you know, about, you know, name should not be named after Japan, and about all of that, from me, it, it's pretty clear, there is a specific target being generated, and I am appalled, I don't understand it. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to understand, is it because it is not a Chinese garden? Or is it because it is a Japanese garden? Because there are other parks that are in the planning process right now. If we're talking about inclusive, truly inclusive, then you, you should be able to recognize, you know, all the different races specifically, not a generic name like an international. This is not inclusive. So, you know, I, I'm trying to get a few things clear.
Thank you, Mr. Yam.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Yam. All right, it's, I think this is the end of public communication this evening, and moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, receiving our monthly general fund, financial report for the period ending August 31, 2025. We have item number six, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and execute a First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with the Peninsula of Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance. I think that's commute.org for financial services to be provided by the city for the fiscal year 2025 to 26. And also, item number seven, adoption of a resolution approving salary and benefit modifications for unrepresented management and confidential employees. Anyone wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Any public comment on any of the items on the consent calendar?
None received.
Okay, so happy to entertain a motion if anyone would like to make any.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Any final comment? Your votes, please, ladies and gentlemen.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5-0.
Very well. There is no public hearing this evening. Moving on to existing business on item number eight, receive an informal report, informational report and updates on new solid grinder installed at the Madron Street Sewer Pump Station.
Thank you, Mayor Fong, as Acting City Manager, Mike Sung, and here to present this is our city engineer and CIP manager, Ahmad Hayya.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Ahmad Hayya, city engineer and CIP manager, here to present the new sewage solid grinder that was recently installed at the Madron Pump Station. Next slide, please. Start off with an overview of our wastewater collection system. The exhibit here shows all the sewer mains within the city. There's about 60 miles throughout the city that collects sewage and directs, and directs the flow to the wastewater treatment plant that is located off of Millbury Avenue. It's at the, the orange dot on the right side of your screen. There's the Madron Pump Station, that's red dot, it collects about one-third of the flows for the city, and it discharges that red line between, that's shown between the Madron Pump Station and the wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, please. So on August 20, about a month ago, city staff installed a brand-new sewage grinder. It's an upgrade. The photo on the bottom left is the grinder. You may be able to see this, this trade name, it's called the Muffin Monster, has a memorable name. It has 17 teeth and serrated cam cutters that is specifically designed to handle wet wipes. It replaces the grinder that's shown in the middle slide. It doesn't have all the features, but this is an upgrade, and.
Be careful with the name of that grinder, but anyway.
And then, yeah, and then the photo on the left, I mean, the far right is the, the slot that where it's, it gets installed, and you can see the, the orange couplings that connects to the new, new grinder. So it's, it was something that our staff can do as part of their routine, not routine, but their plan maintenance. Next slide, please. This slide, I want to preface, it's, it's actually from the manufacturer. We found it very insightful and useful, it actually convinced us to, to purchase this equipment. But we also amended it, so towards the end, when it talks about Virginia City, it's actually, some of the presentation material would be actually Millbury at the Madron Pump Station. So I just want to keep that in mind, so the audio may not match the video, but that's, that's what's going on. So please go ahead and proceed.
As wipes are nondiscernible in design, they do present unique challenges to the sewer system. In the United Kingdom, Thames Water reports that they spend over one and a half billion pounds a month removing blockages in their system. In New York City, in the United States, they reported that they spent over 18 million US dollars over a five-year period disposing of wipes in their system. And the expense isn't just confined to the expense associated with removing the wipes from the system. Vancouver, Washington, in the United States, estimated that they spend $30,000 a year per pump station in increased electrical costs associated with the inefficiencies of those pumps running as they get clogged from wipes. It is hard to change human behavior, and if a municipality has a wipes problem, it's going to be hard to change consumers' habits and flushing the wipes. Therefore, mechanical solutions are going to be your best option to address wipes challenges. There are two options to address nondiscernible material in the waste stream. You either add equipment to remove the material at the pump station, or you add or modify equipment so the solids can make their way through the collection system to be removed at the treatment plant. Macerators, combinator, and dual-shafted grinders are the three non-pumping grinding solutions that are being used today. Dual-shafted grinders offer the most powerful solution and can reduce a variety of solids down to a size that can pass through pumps and valves. Here is a before and after picture of what a grinder can do to wood. The middle set of pictures is how a grinder processes shoes, and the rightmost picture is what a grinder can do with packages of wipes. Dual-shafted grinders consist of counter-rotating shafts with cutters on them. There are a variety of cutter designs which determine the particle size that the grinder will yield. The cutter teeth count, the cutter thickness, and the cutter teeth profile influences the discharge particle size. A 17-teeth serrated cutter results in an innovative two-dimensional cutting that maintains particle sizes in both directions, both the length and the width. The neural spacer that accompanies the wipes-ready cutters helps grab the material, facilitating this cutting in two different directions. When a grinder with 17-teeth wipes-ready cutters grind up wipes, they get small particles, and these particles aren't capable of re-weaving with fats, oils, grease, and hair. Long strips can re-weave with hair, fat, oils, and grease and create a new mass. But I do want to note that particle, these particles are large enough for wastewater treatment plant screens to capture, and you don't have to worry about them making their way completely through the wastewater treatment process. The screen at the wastewater treatment plant will capture these particles and remove them before your actual wastewater treatment processes start. Give you a success story, a case study that we have. Virginia Beach in the United States had a pump station that was having to be frequently de-ragged, and the pump was running a real long time, between six to 12 hours, due to the inefficiencies caused by buildup of rags on the pump. August of 2013, they installed a grinder with wipes-ready cutters, and they saw an immediate reduction in the operational time. They had many times where it was six to 12 hours, and then once the grinder was installed, it was pretty stable at two hours of operational time. The other key thing is, the station, pump station has not had to de-rag that particular pump since the installation of the grinder. That is from 2013 to 2021. We checked in with the customer last year, and they still are reporting no pump clogs and de-ragging needed at that pump station.
Yes, so while we're pleased that we installed the, the new wipes-ready grinder, dual-shafted grinder, we just want to take the opportunity to remind everyone to do not flush wipes. Unlike, you know, the marketing name that was colloquial, we call it flushable wipes, these single-use wipe, wet wipes, they're not meant for sewer systems, and they, they're not safe for private and public sewers. Wet wipes, unlike toilet paper, do not decompose in wastewater, and as the previous video showed, it's a big problem for sewers and public facilities, but it's also a problem for residential plumbing and, and commercial buildings. There are smaller pipes and a lot of tight bit curves and bends, which can create a lot of problems. So we reiterate, do not flush wet wipes, instead dispose of it in a, in a waste bin. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to ask and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Nguyen.
So for the macerator, just clarification, we, we have installed one, correct?
Yeah, we installed the dual grinder, so not the macerator, but the dual-shafted grinder.
Dual grinder, okay, so the, the dual grinder before, I just want to understand better, what was the staff allocation for removing wipes before and then after the installation of that?
But the staff allocation, actually, joined by the facilities manager, made me know more about it, but you used to go multiple times a week to clean the, the thing, and as the video showed, it would clog up with a lot of rags and fibrous materials, so in terms of private staff, I don't know, in terms of the staffing.
Yeah, mainly cost, right? Like, the idea is cost reduction, I just want to.
Labor costs, and also reduction in flow and, and the equipment, it wears out, and by suddenly freezing, it causes problems to the equipment itself, so the pumps can wear out a lot faster. So this grinder will actually prevent damage to the pumps.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thanks very much, and if you have more videos of grinders in action, you can watch those all day. Just curious, what was the project cost?
So the, the, the actual equipment that we installed, that was $25,000.
Okay.
And then it took about half a day for three people to install that, to switch out the grinders at the Madron Pump Station.
Okay, and I know this, you know, flushable wipes issue, it's a problem in a lot of different places. I'm kind of surprised that they're even still able to, you know, put that label on the packaging. I'm curious, is there any effort of, that you're aware of, of, you know, legislation or anything like that, maybe at the state level to maybe try to curtail that use?
Yeah, actually, it's, yes, we're aware, there's both attempts at the state and also at the federal level to, to do that, and so far, it's not been successful. So that's, there is actually a whole trade organization that's built around this to discourage the use of these so-called flushable wipes, and, and try to make some more honest advertisement with that.
Yeah, well, if there's any, you know, opportunities for Millbury to sign on or anything like that, it'd be great to bring that to our attention, so, yeah, happy to join that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Just a real quick thank you to Public Works for handling all the dirty work there, so to speak. Not a fun job, and it's definitely essential for the city to keep it running, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This being an informational item, so I don't think any action is required. Thank you so much, Ahmad, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Item number nine, it's a new business, receive an informational report on pollution prevention, incentives, and rebates and upcoming environmental events. Mr. Sung.
I'd like to introduce our senior environmental programs manager, Andrea Papajon, for a presentation.
Ms. Papajon.
Thank you, Director Sung, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor, council members, Andrea Papajon, City of Millbury. So pleased to present tonight, as you know, earlier this month was National Pollution Prevention Week, and the city hosted its annual cleanup on Saturday, the 20th. So the purpose of the presentation is to share what we can do, some recommendations on what we can do, some available rebates, and our upcoming environmental calendar. Next slide, please. So increasing awareness of pollution prevention is in the best interest of Millbury's environment and economy. So I'd like to go over some recommendations on what we can do. Don't fog up the drain, please don't pour fats, oils, and grease down your drain. As you can see in the diagram in the right, if fats go in the drain, they can clog not only your, your own home's pipe, but it can get into the main sewer line. So you can easily wipe, use a paper towel, and place it in the compost green bin, pour small, small amounts, less than a cup, into the compost green bin. Or for larger amounts, up to 10 gallons, they can be recycled at Blue Line Transfer. Next, please clean up any household hazardous waste, such as automotive leaks and spills. County has a household hazardous waste program, so you can drop off or at one of their collection events or make an appointment. And they also, Scavenger has curbside collection of used motor oil for single-family homes. So you can leave it out on collection day next to your blue bin or drop off antifreeze and motor oil at Blue Line Transfer. And I'll go into some more items that can be dropped off later in the presentation. Also, please pick up pet waste so it doesn't contaminate our waterways. And that goes in the gray bin. And similarly, just as Ahmad mentioned, flushing wet wipes can clog pipes. So please dispose of in the gray landfill bin. Next slide, please. Great, so now I would just like to review some items that you don't want and how to recycle them or sort them properly in carts. So the key thing is that the blue bin is for recyclables. Paper products go under the light-colored lid and containers in the dark-blue lid. I won't go through everything here, but the key thing is, the important thing to know is to really read the labels on the bins. And there's also pictures. It's not always intuitive. As you can see, there are cardboard boxes stacked to be recycled. But in the next slide, please, there are cardboard, such as paper and cardboard pizza boxes that go in the green organics cart. Other things that go in the green cart are food scraps, food soil, paper, and yard trimmings. So it's really important just to pay attention to the labels and the pictures. And that's also state law now, that we have to label the bins properly all throughout the state. So there should be some good graphics and labels that can help guide people on where to put the items. Next slide, please. And then for unwanted items in the gray landfill bin, common items are pet waste, diapers, wet wipes, plastic bags, et cetera. And then these go directly into the landfill. So hopefully, there are a few items here and that we can recycle into the green and blue bins. And next slide, please. And so if you're not sure where something goes, there's actually a search function on Scavenger's website. And this is the URL and a QR code here. You can type in any item, and it'll tell you where it can go, how it can be recycled, or composted, or landfilled. Next slide, please. Great, so Millbrae residents now have access to two fantastic no-charge services. These are designed, you know, to help promote environmentally-friendly waste disposal. First one is a no-charge on-call cleanups. You may know residents have had service for single-family homes for two free cleanups per year. There are some limits on what can be put out, but you can easily call and make an appointment with Scavenger. And more recently, there are multifamily properties that can also have on-call cleanups. If there are between five and 20 units, there are two free cleanups per year. And so, on the next slide, please. These are a lot of the fine print and details, but I would like to urge, you know, property owners and managers to call Scavenger, make an appointment. Here's also the URL to this slide that gives a lot more details. Next slide, please. And the other free service is a no-charge drop-off. And this is at Blue Line Transfer. And I'll have more details on the next page. But residents can bring in a range of items. There are some limits, but it's no cost. You can bring in antifreeze up to 10 gallons per business day, two automotive batteries, unlimited amounts of cardboard, cooking oil, et cetera. So take advantage of this free service to get rid of your unwanted electronic and other hazardous waste materials at Blue Line. Next slide, please. And so the details are available on Scavenger's website. There's this information. I just wanted to flash it up here so you could see, if you wanted more details, you could go to their website. Next slide, please. City also has some rebates available to help prevent pollution. Really cost-effective management tool to reduce waste and conserve our resources. These two are lawn begone and a rain garden rebate. Lawn begone basically helps save water by removing your grass. So if you irrigate your lawn, you can design a beautiful drought-tolerant lawn and get $2 per square foot. And to build on that, you can stack a rain garden. It's an elegant way to capture rainwater and prevent stormwater pollution. You can get a $300 rebate. The way to apply is the URL below. If you have a water account, you can set up an account and apply for the programs. Next slide, please. And two other incentives are rain barrel, a low-cost system supplement your water supply. There are all different sizes, but the most common ones are between 50 and 99 gallons, $100 per barrel rebate. And you can get up to two barrels at your home. And then for indoors, there's a residential self-audit tool. And you want to be able to kind of measure how much water you're using indoors and find out if you have any leaks. So there's a self-guided audit that you can do with this toolkit at home. And there's also, includes free items like toilet-dye tablets and devices to help save water. And both of those programs are, you apply online as well through our partner at Bosca. Next slide, please. And lastly, this is a snapshot of our environmental programs calendar for the fiscal year. And so the next couple of events I'll mention, Saturday, October 18th is a compost giveaway. It's spur trail between Elder and Palm. Please come and pick up free compost. Saturday, October 25th is an electronic recycling and reuse drop-off. This is conveniently located at our library parking lot. So you can bring electronic waste items at no charge. And Saturday, November 8th is a lawn replacement class. So if you're interested in the lawn begone or the rain garden rebate, you can learn about designing your new lawn and getting the rebate. And then I'll just also mention Saturday, December 6th is a paper shredding event. At the library parking lot, we'll have a huge truck. And you can bring, you know, boxes of papers that you want to be shredded. It'll be done on-site, so it'll be all confidential. So this is a team effort. So working together really helps us create a more sustainable Millbrae. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the update, Ms. Papajon. Anyone else on the council?
Just going to say thank you for the informative presentation and thank you for the Coastal Cleanup Day. Your staff did a great job.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks very much. Just one suggestion. I seem to recall many years ago, there was, I think, like a place where you can drop off batteries, either at City Hall or maybe at the library, some type of a box. I think it might be a useful thing to have, just something simple, something you wouldn't want to have to take all the way to Blue Line Transfer, I think, or outside of Millbrae. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? If that's something that could be done?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holber. I appreciate your suggestion. There is an option to leave your batteries on top of your gray bin, your landfill bin with your pickup. So you can do that on a weekly basis if you choose. We do have a small collection box at City Hall that, you know, our employees bring. And, you know, honestly, we'd be happy to collect batteries if residents wanted to drop them in if that was more convenient. It is, you know, no sweat for us to do that if that's convenient. They don't want to put it out on their bin. So thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah, the one comment about living in on a bin is it's not really feasible for multifamily-type properties. So, yeah, if there's something visible, I think that would be useful.
That is a very good, very good point. We can definitely look into that. And what we do is, we are part of the county's program where we can drop off batteries. And so happy to add that into our collection. Thank you for your suggestion.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Any public comments? I doubt it.
There are no public comments, sir.
Okay, very well. Thank you for the updates. You know, different e-waste programs and many other free programs that were offered to our residents with the assistance of the scavengers. It's much appreciated because we got to find a way to keep our earth a little cleaner and a little bit more environmentally friendly. Although, we understand how important to use the batteries and some of the other features that keeps our life more convenient. But at any rate, you know, thank you for keeping us informed. And if there is nothing else, I will close this item. Okay, thank you, Ms. Papajon.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to council comment. Do we have volunteers? Councilmember Whitman.
So I canvassed District 4, 40, I think, 40 or 50 neighbors. And it's mainly around Tioga. The takeaway from that exercise was really to understand what were the concerns of the residents. Overall, they had to think through it, which is a good sign, right? It wasn't like immediate. But one thing did stick out was the people running stop signs. So they did, there was a lot of consistency around this comment on Tioga especially, and Morningside, I believe, that intersection. And I also observed that, too. It wasn't just them making it up like we were. As I was discussing with the neighbors, I did observe a couple of times people running stop signs or even speeding, I think, 40 or 50 miles per hour, which is strange for a residential neighborhood. But I did notice that. And maybe it's something that the city can look into. It's particularly in that area for our public safety. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else? Councilmember Renaldi.
Just want to start off with Safe Routes to School program that I've been heavily involved in pretty much throughout the whole course of the year. We had an in-person meeting with the Safe Routes to School program. We were joined by Superintendent Hickey, Green Hills Principal Kerry Dees, a city manager by the name of Tom Williams. I don't know if anyone's familiar with him. Also, two of our engineers, Ahmad Hayad, as well as our newest engineer, Brandon Wang. And Brandon presented to the Safe Routes to School program some proposed projects that we have that are long-term for Green Hills and did a fantastic job, being a month into the job and doing the presentation. Absolutely blew everyone away. So still continued commitment on our part to try to find funding for these projects. Also, we had our coastal cleanup with our environmental program manager, Andrea Papajon. Great time over there. They did a great job of that program. And last but not least, we have Peninsula Clean Energy, where we went to the unveiling of, I think it was 130-plus?
143.
143 electric chargers for vehicles. So great seeing the commitment there to clean energy and doing our part to help out the environment.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember C.C. Riley.
Yeah, that's very cool for the install. 143 EV charge. It was the large one in the West Coast, right? And it's free. So I already refer one of my friends to install this because if you know someone have more than four units above, they can install for you for free. It's good for environment and good for everybody. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I attended the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee meeting. They were discussing the Dia de los Muertos event, which is scheduled for, I believe, November 7th, which is a Friday in the evening. I think there are also some discussions behind the scenes about potentially merging the Cultural Arts Committee with the Community Enhancement Committee, although no decisions have been made yet or no recommendations from those committees have been made yet. But discussions are kind of ongoing behind the scenes. I also attended the commute.org meeting. And the big news is that they are finally moving on from their 2008 Prius that has reached the end of its useful life and will be purchasing a new, relatively new used electric vehicle to replace that for their staff. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank the chief for joining us this evening and also on 9/11 reminded all of us, you know, the attack that was on our country and how our first responders gave their lives serving everyone in New York as part of that incident. And we never forget those men and women who served this country in the blue uniform. And thank you for the reminder and also the ceremony. Also attended the Peninsula Clean Energy install as Councilmember Renaldi and also Councilmember Riley has explained. This has always been a part of the discussion since we have the surplus fund from Peninsula Clean Energy as we were discussing how to appropriate that over $200 million of surplus funds. And being able to bring these resources back to the city and have one of the biggest EV charging facility installation in multifamily in the West Coast, 143 units of EV charging capability. And that means one charging port for every parking space in that multifamily complex, in that condominium complex. And as, you know, I said in the ribbon-cutting ceremony, one of the greatest challenge to, you know, for homeowners to transition to EVs in multifamily neighborhood is being able to come home and charge your car, plug into a wall outlet in a commonly managed parking structure. And how do you get, you know, your charger in there, right, when there's no outlet available? So this sort of multi-jurisdictional effort, right, with between PC and vendors, the Bayview HOA organizations, and also our city as well, coming together and finding an innovative and right-sized and cost-effective solutions. And it's so cost-effective to the point where it doesn't cost the HOA a single dollar to have it installed. And it's free to them. And this is a model at which I believe, we all believe, that can be replicated throughout the county, throughout the state, and throughout the nation as we continue to try to make a sizable impact to our environment and keeping us a little cleaner and getting rid of our reliance on fossil fuel. That's a big step in the right direction. So I'm particularly proud to be a part of that process and be able to get this done in a city in Millbrae. So, you know, really thankful for the partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy to getting this done. It's a big deal for all of us on that day. And that's, yes, we ordered the best weather for that day as well. And so much so that many folks in the community showed up and particularly excited about this opportunity. So with that said, you know, with all the happy news this evening, we do have to close this evening in honor of a former park and rec commissioner. Councilmember Renaldi.
Thanks, Mayor Feng. I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory of former Parks and Recreation Commissioner George Lynch. Passed away recently in his sleep on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. George served on Parks and Recreation Commission for 25 years. He's a strong advocate for the construction of the spur trail. And his name can be found on the dedication plaque recognizing that achievement. George always brought a thoughtful and historical perspective to commission discussions, respected the input of the public, consistently acted with what he believed was best for the city of Millbrae. Will be remembered as a vibrant, outgoing, and dedicated community leader whose contributions have left a lasting mark on our city. We also extend our condolences to his family, including his daughters Kathleen, Molly, and his wife Susan. In short, just want to say to the family and to George, thank you for making Millbrae a better community. a better community.
Yeah, the city of Millbury is particularly thankful to many dedicated volunteers who made us great, especially to George, who dedicated 25 years of his life to serving the people of Millbury, and we're better because of him. And we're very thankful to have a volunteer such as this, because that's what keep this community strong. Councilmember Riley, you have a comment for Mr. Lynch?
Thank you so much for his dedication to serve our community. He set up a good example, all our citizens to follow. We all have to work hard for our best Millbury to come. Thank you.
If nothing else, we will close and adjourn the meeting this evening at 9:12 PM in honor and loving memory of Commissioner George Lynch, with gratitude and for his many years of service and the lasting impact he has made on all of us. Thank you all.